If everybody would have a seat. We appreciate you all coming down. And I'll call the order. The Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting of March 8, 2018. Want to welcome everyone in the cold spring weather. Hope everybody didn't get too much snow this morning. First is the adoption of the agenda. And that was sent to you all before. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda? There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it, and this agenda is adopted. Now we're on to item C, which is the approval of the February 22, 2018, minutes of the meeting. And those were mailed to you earlier. Any additions, corrections, questions? We'll need a motion to adopt the minutes. Is there a motion? Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Now we're on to the recognition of the council members. And I go by who I see first, and I've only seen one. Councilman Withers, you want to speak now or just wait? Okay, perfect. All right. Well, let's get on to the items for deferral or withdrawal. Lucy.
Good afternoon. The items for deferral or withdrawal on the agenda include items 1A and 1B pertaining to sidewalks, 2017Z-029TX and 2017Z-030TX, both deferring to the April 26, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item 2, 2006SP-093, the Old Mill SP periodic review. Staff's recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 3, 2015SP-049, 1225 Stainback Avenue Amendment. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item 4, 2018SP-003, 1600 DB Todd Jr. SP. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item 5, 2018SP-016, the City View Estates. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the April 26, 2018 meeting. On page 6, item number 7, 2017S-217, Old Hickory Crossing subdivision. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 9, 80-72P, Apache Trail Commercial Revision and Final. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10, 2017Z-122PR. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting. Items 12A and B, on page 7, 2018CP-010, the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan and the associated case, the reservoir, as well as a third associated case, 12C, the PUD cancellation. All of these, staff's recommending to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item 13, 2017SP-048, the Somerset Town Homes. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the April 12 meeting. Item 14, on page 8, 2018SP-021, the Curry Road cottages. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 15, 2018SP-027, 12558 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting. And item number 16, 2018IN-01, the Belmont University Institutional Overlay Amendment. Staff's recommendation is to defer to the March 22 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Lucy. So the items for deferral or withdrawal are items. I'll go through these slow so we make sure we get these correct. Items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 9, 10, 12, A, B, and C, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. Those items are deferred or withdrawn. We are on to the consent agenda.
So as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on consent, as notice to the public, items on consent will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And that agenda is as follows, starting on page 6. Item 6, 2018SP-019, the Oliveri property. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all. Item number 8, 2017S-271, this is the Jenkins property. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 11A, 2017CP-014, this is the Donaldson-Hermitage-Old Hickory Community Plan Amendment. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And then the related case, item 11B, 2017SP-055 at Ford 221 Central Pike. Staff's recommendations is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all, subject to the approval of the associated plan amendment. On page 8, item 17, 2018S-038, this is the Rhythm on Yocley. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 18, 2018-77P, this is the Kroger 880 Building Expansion. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Moving to page 9, number 19, 8-65P, this is the Nashville Park and Mini Storage. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Item number 21, 2018Z-026PR. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item 23, 2018Z-028, staff's recommendation is to approve. Under Other Business, item 25, a new employee contract for Eric Hammer. And then number 29, to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items. It's my understanding that we may also add number 22, 2018Z-027PR, to the consent item, and staff's recommendation is to approve that one.
All right. So again, let's go through these slowly, make sure, Lucy, I don't mess up. Item, these are consent agenda items. Item number 6, 8, 11A, 11B, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 25, and 29.
That's correct.
That's correct. Commissioners, you've heard the items for the consent agenda. We'll need a motion to approve. Is there a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it, and the consent, those items on the consent agenda passed. Now, that means that we are hearing items number 20 and 24. Is that correct, Lucy?
Yes.
Perfect. So for the audience, that means that the only items that we're going to hear this afternoon are items number 20 and 24. So if you're here for any other item, we've already disposed of those particular items. We'll kind of let everybody get out of the room. And then we are on item 20.
All right. Item 20 is a request to rezone from Industrial Warehousing Distribution to mixed-use limited alternative zoning on 0.83 acres located at 909 Hawkins Street. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. To give you a little bit of context, the site is outlined in red and is located south of I-40 here, west of I-65, west of 8th Avenue South, which is here, and east of 12th Avenue The site currently contains an existing structure and has frontage on both Hawkins Street, which is up here, and South Street, which is down here. The current zoning is IWD, and the proposed zoning is mixed-use limited alternative. You'll notice that north of I-40 is in the downtown code, which is applied to our central business district. Other surrounding zoning districts include some higher-intensity residential and commercial uses along 8th Avenue South, and as well as along 12th Avenue South. There is an area of R6 zoning south of the site. The policy is T4, mixed-use neighborhood, so it's urban-mixed-use neighborhood, which is intended to provide moderate-to-high-density residential and non-residential development in areas that are envisioned to become primarily mixed-use. The proposed zoning allows for a mixture of uses, including commercial and residential, at a pedestrian scale that is appropriate and is in keeping with nearby residential areas. The property is located in an area identified by Nashville Next as a transition or infill area, where higher-density development is appropriate between larger activity centers, so here to the north, as well as second and third-tier centers to the east and west, and the surrounding neighborhoods. As I mentioned, there's a residential neighborhood here. The site is located about 600 feet west of an existing MTA bus route, or bus stop, which is in here. And then 12th Avenue South, which runs here, is an arterial boulevard that also has an existing bus route and bus stop. This is a different view of the site. So I-40 is down here. Hawkins Street is here. And South is right here. You'll notice that there's been a lot of residential development located here, which developed under existing R6 zoning. Here's another view. Here's the site here that we're talking about today. And I wanted to kind of walk you through the street level so you can see the character that has developed over the past few years. So this is a street view of the site. There's a one-story building on it right now. Here's an alley that runs east of the existing building. As we move east down south, this is a neighboring building. Here's a new development going up. This is right on the other side of I-40 inside the downtown code. And then this is, again, moving further towards 8th Avenue South. So moving, stepping away a block, so stepping south from South Street, here is an existing one-story building that's been around for a little bit. And then here's some new residential development. And then as we move further down, there's an alley that is located, so 8th Avenue is in front of these structures here. And then there's an alley that is located behind those structures, and then another street. So we're kind of working back from 8th. You can get a feel for the new, the character that's been pretty, it's reflective of the new development in the area. And this is a picture from just 2016 of what this house looked like a few years ago, and the surroundings. This is, again, as we move kind of west, one block away, the feel for how the new, the existing residences look with the new residences that are coming onboard. And then this is really to show that there is a change in topography on the west side of South Street. It's much higher, and then it kind of slopes down. And so this is a site here, so you can see that there's a natural fall in the topography. So that was just shown to give you some context. So the MULA height and bulk standards depend on the scope of future development. Different standards would apply to single-family, two-family, and attached housing. These would all be capped at three stories. Then to multifamily development, which can go up to four stories and 60 feet if the building is stepped back. Another variable related to height is the floor-area ratio. So the floor-area ratio for MULA districts is 1. This means that the total area of all buildings divided by the total lot area has to equal or cannot exceed 1. Essentially, what this means is that for every additional story, the building footprint would have to shrink to keep within that ratio. So at this stage, it would be very difficult to predict the future build-out, including the building height, without knowing what the proposed use is, which would be directly related to the layout and the required parking. That said, planning prepared to modeling diagrams to address the many results that could come out of future development at this site. So these modeling diagrams are meant to depict the maximum development footprint as it pertains to floor-area ratio and height only. And they do not, they are not representative of future build-out, site access, parking, that sort of thing. So we're looking towards downtown, which is here. 8th, I'm sorry, South Street is along here. And then here is an existing alley that runs behind the 8th Street, I'm sorry, the South Street units. So the red, the block in red shows a one-story building that it covers the entire site. So the floor-area ratio in this instance would be 1. So this means that this one-story building would not be able to go up any additional stories. And this would be the maximum height in this scenario. The green image on the screen is an SP that was approved on the adjacent property. This was an SP that was approved in 2015 for an office development and was approved at three stories, a maximum of 60 feet from South Street. So this is what was approved a few years ago. Again, it has not been built yet. So this is a different scenario here. And this shows the red image at a four-story building at a max of 60 feet. And so what this means is that they could go up, you could go up three stories and 45 feet before having to step back 15 feet. And then you could go up another story where, to four total stories and a maximum of 60 Again, this kind of gives a feel for if a four-story building were to develop right on the property line. You know, it's reflective of the existing topography, which is why these are shown up on a hill like this. But I do want to reemphasize that at this stage, it would be very difficult to know exactly where the buildings would be located, how tall they would be, the massing, without knowing what the proposed use is. And this is why we have the bulk regulation standards and the metro zoning code that would ensure that future development is in keeping with the MULA requirements. This rezoning is, the MULA is compatible with surrounding land uses and is consistent with policy. The bulk and voting placement standards associated with MULA ensures that mixed-use development that addresses the pedestrian realm and limits the amount of parking between the buildings and the street, which is consistent with the urban-mixed-use neighborhood policy. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, Abby. All right, we'll open this item for public hearing. Ms. The Advocate in the room, welcome. You'll have 10 minutes to present, and you'll have, out of that, you can reserve two minutes of the 10 for rebuttal. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Jay Fulmer with Former Engineering. I'm the applicant on behalf of the developers who are here today, if you'd like to ask them any questions as well. But we, the main purpose of the rezoning application was to allow residential use. The intent is to do a primarily residential structure there. Mixed use is being considered with a small amount of retail along South Street. The Hawkins Street is a more difficult retail application, but we could focus, you could line up a structured parking deck with some of an amenity area for the activation. But at this time, we're trying to identify whether or not retail is feasible in this area at this time. So one thing that we've been hesitant to say is that it will be truly mixed use because we don't want to mislead anybody. There's still some items to flesh out there. But the MULA was an appropriate zoning classification based on the planning policy. And so there's a base rezon application for just that. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or I'll save the rest for rebuttal.
Thank you. You have two minutes for your rebuttal.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak against? Pose. Come on up. If you all will line up, that would be great. It will help us get through this. But you've got two minutes. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Matt Cantrell. I'm at 900 South Side Place. So I think I speak for a lot of the homeowners in the area. Our concern is not that we don't want the area to improve. Our concern is the unknown. We just don't know what to expect. A lot of us bought in that area specifically because of the views of the city. And the concern that we have is as these buildings get rezoned, it's going to continue. And our concern is that we're going to lose those views and potentially damage property values. So it, the area has its own, you know, feel and culture to it, and we just don't want to lose that in the process. We're also concerned about the traffic and the noise that could be generated from the retail part of this, because South Street is a one-lane road on each side of the street. There are cars that do park on the street, so we're concerned about traffic and just overflow parking and how that would all work for the area. And they did answer one question. I asked if it was going to be rental homes or if it would be owned properties. They did say it's targeted for owned properties, which is nice. But we just have concerns because there's a lot of unknowns. And the hope was that coming here today, we would actually maybe find a little bit of information about what's to be expected. But right now, it's essentially approval to do something within the guidelines, but no real understanding of what we're going to have around us. So I think a lot of us are just concerned about that. So I appreciate you listening, and thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello. My name is Marilyn Austin, and I live at 937 South Street, which, I came here today because I was concerned about the other properties, aside from this one being rezoned, many of the things that he just mentioned. But I've just learned that right in front of our house will be the parking deck, the SP. Is that what that means? That was approved for in 2015. The green, when she did the
We'll answer the question.
That is blocking the view as well, and I didn't know if, I didn't know until I came here just now that that had been approved. So I guess my question might be for maybe Mr. Fulmer, if that's, if that is already going to be a parking deck, and if he knows how tall it is. And then I wondered what conditions, it's up for approval with conditions? I just wonder what those conditions were. I guess that means, is it really mixed use?
We can, we'll answer that for you for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Susan Rogers, and I own 929 South, South Street, which is, if you look at the picture, it's right in between the parking lot and the red line. And it's, I've been saving for years since I purchased this to build. We're in final plans. And I just heard about this, and I'm like, okay, my view's going to be totally blocked. And I just spent thousands of dollars on an architect, and we were about to come and get permits. So am I allowed to come in and say, hey, I want to build my house higher, so I have a view? I'm right on that front row, just as this other lady is. And, you know, with conditions, at least if you guys are going to prove this, think about the people on the other side. We're on a slight hill, but if you build 60 feet and we're at 40 feet, you know, we're just going to be looking at a building. And that's not why we bought those properties. I mean, I bought my property three years ago and have saved to do this move. And like I say, I'm ready to pull my permits. And now I feel like I've just wasted years and money, and the property will have zero value. Should have just left what was there, you know, had the city just not let us know. And I never got notice of this until this morning somebody told me. Nobody sent me a letter, and I'm the homeowner on record for years. So just in the future, it'd be nice to be notified. And just finding out that they were going to build a 60-foot building on the other side is, you know, you just shake your head. It's terrible.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So my name is Leon Toy. I own a piece of land right now over at 916 Archer, which is just behind, I guess, due south of the proposed rezoning. And pretty much have similar opinions as other people that I just have concern about the height blocking. You know, the pictures that were shown, I don't, I don't know if you all have driven by there and sort of familiarized yourself with the development that's gone on, gone in that Gulch South or Gulch View neighborhood. But I'm not sure that those pictures do the neighborhood justice. There's a lot of high-end, modern construction houses that are built with windows facing the north for the downtown views, hence the name Gulch View or the, you know, the branding of it. And the value of some of these houses is pretty astronomical. We looked at one to purchase that was an attached HBR, attached, that was going to be listed for 1.1 million. So these are, you know, very expensive houses that are built and sold based on the views. So I think a lot of the people here are interested in protecting those. And that being said, I've talked to Mr. Fulmer, and there are some interesting things that could be built over there. You know, the mixed use, if it is mixed use with some restaurants and things like that, it might be nice for the people that are living in that neighborhood. But we'd just like to make sure that the views are held and checked, and particularly downstream. So if they rezoned this one, I know there's the, oh, incidentally, the SP that was approved in 2015 was rezoned before a lot of the neighborhood had developed. This development kind of flipped in a two-year time period. And so I'm not sure that that would have been approved, you know, in modern-day times. But at any rate, we would be interested in, or I'd be interested in what could be developed around there as long as it's in check. But I'd be concerned that this might set the precedent for other buildings to be knocked down, the Beeman Center, and erupts even taller buildings. So that's what I'm interested in protecting. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
My name is Jerry Abrams. We represent the 949, 951, two streets back from this place on South Side Place. We paid a little over 1.5 million for our house.
What is your address? State your
949 and 951. We have the two blocks. On South Side Place. We had problems with our builders, and long story short, we had to take off the top of our building because we were too high. That was a contractor, it wasn't us. We purchased the property. What we're afraid of is this is going to be right in front of our property, and he'll say, hey, it's okay, we're 60, we're 40. Our main living's on the second floor. We ask, we can go to the third floor, and we have a third floor, and we have a better view. To get the real good views, you're already on, you have to go to the fourth floors, which is the 40 feet. Having this to be in 60 feet, we're just going to lose, I mean, we just believe we're just going to lose value to our properties. And we just purchased it about three months ago. So we're not against, we're pro-business. We have several businesses here. We just would ask, we would like to see what we're getting before you guys vote on this. It's just the unknown of what are we going to get? So that's it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal.
Excuse me. I'll try to run down and touch on several of these. The traffic being the first part, we will be required to have a traffic study. And we've engaged KCI, who does the bulk of them in town. And they've already met with the city and are in process of studying it. And so any improvements that are necessary, excuse me, you know, will be required to build. Street parking, if it's a problem, can be regulated, and the city will regulate that. Any noise, right now, the retail spaces in there are 1,500 square feet and about 2,000 square feet. They're not going to be great, greatly large retail spaces that would generate a lot of noise. Parking would be below the buildings, so there shouldn't be a bunch of, a bunch of noise created by slamming car doors or traffic from those. To answer one of the conditions that was stated, it was for the affordable housing, which is the standard condition on most rezonings. which is the standard condition on most rezonings. For the blocked views, unfortunately, the, you can, right now, the IWD district has a 30-foot max at setback line with a one and a half to one sky plane. So, until you run out of FAR, you could do a 60-foot-tall building there now. And our intent, or the current design intent, has the building at about 55 feet, and so the intent's not to max out every inch of, of the allowable box. But MUL was the, the program that was needed for this property to redevelop, rather than the, the one step down, I think it's the MUN. But otherwise, they're, you know, the, the intent's to build within the base zoning code that's supported by the policy plan. And it's, I understand the unfortunate nature of having residential right next to a industrial district or a, or a mixed-use planning policy.
Thank you.
But thank you for your consideration.
Appreciate it. Declare the public hearing closed, and Vice Chair, you want to go first?
Sure. I guess, I had a couple of questions, and one just triggered by the, the comment that was just made about the height that's allowed with the current IWD zoning.
So, there is no maximum height in IWD.
Okay.
You have to adhere to the, the... Yes, for the control plane that Jay was talking about. But other than that, you could go higher than 460.
And what's the control plane? What does that mean?
It's the ratio of vertical to horizontal. So, you can step up, I think it's 1.5 to 1, but there's some control, the higher you go, the further you have to step it back.
Okay.
And in. So, from all sides, so it would have to kind of...
But it can still go up?
It can still go up, right.
It can still go up, okay. Did we have any discussions about a specific plan versus a zone change, or was that...
So, MULA is supported by this policy. The existing zoning district, IWD, is not listed as a zoning district that is supported by the policy. And so, when we review the application, we review what the proposed zoning change is, and if that is consistent with policy. In this case, it is, and it, therefore, that's what we reviewed. I mean, if an SP had been submitted, we would have reviewed that to see if the type of SP was consistent with the policy. But in this case, the straight zone, the MULA, is consistent, so that's what we reviewed.
Okay.
I might just also add, if you can go to the policy slide, I mean, this is a very interesting area just outside of, of downtown, but also that is between, you know, a residential area and a neighborhood. And I thought those images were very interesting, because as you look and see how this, this particular neighborhood has changed over time, we had a lot of one-story, you know, ranch-style homes. And I wonder sort of how those residents would have, you know, responded when sort of the taller homes were being built in the area over the last couple of years. And I think, that's not to say, I mean, I think, you know, we all understand when, when change occurs in your community, it's really important to understand the impacts and what's appropriate. But I think looking at this particular slide here, and looking at how close this is to corridors and more intense zoning districts, when you asked about the SP, I think one of the reasons we became comfortable was that this is an NA district, and so there are standards that will help create a more urban form, and will ensure that the parking is located in the right way, in the right location to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment. And so, those typically will help us become more comfortable, for example, if, if a proposed zoning district meets the policy goals.
Okay.
And we also do look at the existing zoning, and what kind of height is allowed under the existing zoning. And as the applicant said, that there is some ability to go to approximately the same height that this, this zone change would allow. So, when we looked at that, we didn't feel like it was significantly different from what the current zoning allows. And it, it's a, it's an area that the policy was put in place to try to change from an industrial character to more residential and mixed-use, near corridors, near downtown. So, from a big-picture planning perspective, it is consistent with the overall goals, and it is changing so that you won't have the more incompatible uses directly adjacent to residential neighborhoods. So, having mixed use versus industrial from a big-picture standpoint was why this policy was put in place.
Okay. So, over time, I mean, theoretically, this whole area down to Interstate 40 could, could move towards higher, higher heights. Do we have, what are our community meeting requirements around rezonings? Is there any?
There's no requirement for a community meeting unless there's a plan amendment, unless there's a community plan amendment, and there is no community plan amendment with this application. This one is consistent, it's a straight rezoning that staff is recommending as consistent with the policy.
Okay. I mean, I can understand some of the concerns and with the surrounding neighborhood, and possibly, you know, a chance for the neighborhood to meet with the developers would have been a good step in ensuring some, you know, community support for this project. You know, purely from a planning perspective, which is what we're looking at, you know, this is, this is, we want to concentrate density towards downtown, we want to bring residents into these areas. You know, from a planning perspective, I, I agree with staff's recommendation. I do understand, you know, the way this all works. It's kind of like a chicken and the egg, right? Like, what neighborhood develops first, and then what comes after that? And it's really hard to predict the future. But I think, Lucy, to your point just now, you know, how did all of these small, little ranch houses feel when they started seeing these four-story homes going in all around them? I mean, change is just happening, and it's hard to predict how it's going to happen. You know, and I remember one case that we had a couple of years ago with one of the downtown buildings, and we talked a lot about, like, what's our vision for downtown? Do we want it to be like a wedding cake, where it starts low and moves up? Or do we want some diversity to that? And I think this project brings to mind another idea like that, which is that I kind of do understand the, the thinking of the neighbors in this area, that we would kind of slope up, you know, density would move up. Like, that sort of intuitively makes sense for the pattern of development. But again, that's not, you know, there's no, there's nothing out there that requires that. That's just sort of intuitively what would make sense. So, I'm torn, but, so I'll continue to listen. Those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Bachele.
I just had a couple of questions. One is, he talked about the 50, 60-foot height, from the street, that is, or from the level?
So, it's, the build-two zone in this area for this zoning district is 0 to 15 feet, because this site is located in the urban zoning overlay. So, that means that the front of the building, the front setback, could be anywhere from 0 to 15 feet from the property line. Then, then you can go up three stories without having to step the building back. Once you've reached 45 feet and three stories, the building will have to step back 15 feet from the street in order to go up an additional story. So, the range of where the building would start just depends on if it's where it is within that 0 to 15-feet build-two zone.
So, I was just sorry...
The existing IWD zoning has a 30-foot maximum height at the setback line, and then a 1.5 to 1 vertically-to-horizontally slope plane from that, from that setback line. So, you can start at 30 feet at the setback line, and then you go up from there 1, 1 and 1/2 feet vertically for every 1 foot horizontally.
Okay. I guess what I was trying to understand, because the whole terrain is sloped, and so I was trying to understand if that height was going to be actually measured from a lower starting point, but it sounds like it isn't, because they could technically be at the zero mark as far as the setback goes. So, they could technically go up to the full height from South Street, even though the, the hill is sloping down.
Right. So, the, it, the height is typically measured by codes from the average elevation of the finished floor. So, if it went back, like the SP adjacent, there's, it slopes down as well, so there's parking underneath. But from the street, it's only three stories from South Street. So...
So, and if he, the setback was 15 feet, for example, then because of the slope, it would be quite a bit lower than what everybody's anticipating by looking across. In other words, even if it was 40 feet high, it would be, it looks like the slope's pretty steep, right? So, it would really, they'd still be looking out their second story at the view. Am I mixed up?
Well, there's setbacks, and then there's setbacks. So, the set, the setback is, is determined from the build-two zone. So, within that build-two zone is really kind of the setback, is where the building could start and go up three stories. Then the building itself would have to step back 15 feet. So, there's two different kind of similar terms that are being used. But the, the height itself would be measured from the average elevation of the finished floor, of, of facing along the street. So, assuming the building fronts south, it would be measured from that, the front end, from that point can go up.
I think, I think given the variables that, that Abby went through in terms of the FAR and sort of the build-two, I wouldn't want to give anyone in the community a false sense of expectation in terms of what would or would not be impacted by the, the height of the building. It's interesting, we were talking earlier after I started looking through some of the public comments, and view sheds generally are not necessarily anything that in our, in our Nashville Next Plan that we address. We do, we do it for the state capital. I mean, there are definitely some areas where we have looked at a cone of influence. I think this commission has seen visual modeling in and around the capital of new buildings, and view shed protection is something that we're very interested in for that, for that resource. I think sort of quality of life is something that, in terms of planning, how we would want to look at view sheds to the extent that you want to make sure there's light and air and things like that. But as I said, I, I would be cautious about giving any sense of, of expectation about, you know, within the feet, about sort of what would be impacted or not. We tried as, as best we could in the modeling to capture a range of, of possibilities for what's there. But I think, based on site characteristics and parking plans and other things, that could, that could change.
And our models aren't necessarily how, how it will be designed, that we were trying to show the maximum of what would be allowed under the zoning. It's possible that they could have more of the, the taller building on one side or the other, and we just don't know exactly what the final design will look like at this point. But just because they are allowed to do a certain amount doesn't mean that they will necessarily max all of that out, because once they do the architecture for the building, it might mean that it's a better design to move the tower portion over to one side, or, and we just don't know that right now.
And then one other question, the, the building that's already approved, right, to the lot adjacent, that one is, is that a parking garage?
Office building.
Office building, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's got... It's a three-story building, it's for office uses, and then there is a garage to the back, like, so, how, where the land kind of slopes down, there's a garage back there, but best, but it does not appear to be on the front of the building.
So, one more question, I'm done. When the, just to clarify sort of what the community will learn and when, if we approve this today, and then the builder goes ahead to get his permits, will there be any opportunity for the community to weigh in, or is this the only chance?
This is not the only chance, because if you recommend approval, it will go on to council, where there will be three readings, and there's a public hearing during the council process as well. So, there'll be additional opportunity for that.
Okay, I'd like to keep listening.
Councilman.
I support the commission, the staff recommendation. My questions were answered when you asked. The thing that got my attention from the public was the, the views, but the current zoning would block those views anyway, so it's not that they are getting anything less or more than what they will get regardless. So, I think I'm going to go ahead and support the recommendation.
Commissioner Moore.
I think I definitely understand the community's concern about the height, but I think when I look at this and looking at the, this being a transition between the higher-intensity areas nearby, and the possibility of adding development near transit, I understand the change, and I support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Gavil.
One more quick question. One of the speakers mentioned that they just found out about this today, is, do we do mailings on these?
We do. And I was looking through, the notices were sent, and I believe the address on file for that speaker was not a Nashville address. It was a different state. So, I don't know if maybe that, I don't know if she can speak to that, but that's the owner's address information that we have with our records from GIS that pulls from the assessor's office, so...
I, I support the staff's recommendation. I think it's consistent with the plan. I think this is a changing neighborhood. It's, some of these houses block other people's views. Unfortunately, that's just part of growth. So, I support staff's...
Commissioner Sims.
Oh, this is so hard, because this is a 180-year-old neighborhood. And by the way, it's legally known as Edge Hill, not as the Gulch. And it is a neighborhood that has just been devastated in the last three years. Many of the older homeowners were very upset about the new, some of your homes that are million-dollar homes now, because their views were blocked. And this is a neighborhood where there's been so much change that the ability for the community to have a voice in it is, to me, just something that should happen, no matter what. I'm also concerned that this is a true residential neighborhood and has been for probably 100 years. And there's no transition like we see in most transitional neighborhoods, where there's something that allows it to move from true residential to... So, I am concerned about this. I wish, you know, when we say multiple times in Nashville Next, that the heart of the city is neighborhoods, that when people are concerned about their investments, their moving there, their expectations, that we, it should never be a surprise. One of the reasons this neighborhood has been so hard is because the neighborhood this request is from is actually Freddie O'Connell's, but the neighborhood itself is under Colby Sledge. So, you don't have a council person that can really bridge that world right now. Having said all that, and I'm heartbroken, because I, I actually do know what's happening intently, intensely with our urban neighborhoods. Having said that, the zoning they're requesting is far better than what we've got. This is what our policy calls for. We are a nation of policies, supposedly, and, so it breaks my heart to do it, but I think I'm going to have to go with the staff's recommendation.
We'll need a motion.
I move approval with conditions, consistent with the staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion, and there's been a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and the staff recommendation is approved. We're on item number 24.
Mr. Chair? Question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, are they, how do we know how the council member, if the council member supports or doesn't... or doesn't support the legislation? Is that recorded anywhere?
No, but you will generally know, they'll either write a letter or show up here, but on the council floor, you know, it's obviously.
Yeah, but in here, if they don't, if we don't have a letter, we have no.
No, it's, it's not a requirement.
And sometimes council members just want to see the process play out and then decide at the end of the process which way they'll go, so they don't always take positions at this point.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir. Good question, though. All right, item 24.
All right, item number 24 is a zone change request. The request is to change zoning from RS 15 to RS 10. The property is highlighted in red. This is located at the northeast corner of Hesse Road and Earhart Road. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The property is now in gray. This is approximately 51 acres, again, still at that northeast corner. It is, the majority of the zoning around here and this property is zoned RS 15. There are some other zoning designations in the area, such as an SP for residential to the southeast, AR 2A to the, I'm sorry, to the southwest, my apologies, to, also to the southwest is AR 2A. I would like to point out this parcel right here for the planning commissioners. Not long ago, you saw a zone change request for an SP at this location. It just went through council on public hearing, that's why it's not identified as an SP on the zoning map, but I wanted to point that out, too. The policy is conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood evolving. This policy is intended to create and enhance suburban neighborhoods with more housing choices and improved connectivity. The zone changes, the proposal in front of you right now is highlighted in red. As you can see, the majority of the area is within this neighborhood evolving policy. The proposed RS 10 zoning district is consistent with the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy. Neighborhood evolving policies can support a variety of housing types, including single-family neighborhoods, and are intended to achieve a range of densities and housing options. The proposed zoning to RS 10 would allow us for single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet per lot. The single-family residential uses are consistent with the T3 suburban evolving policy, therefore staff recommends approval with conditions.
We'll open this item for public hearing. The applicant? 10 minutes, 2 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates. I'm representing the applicant on this proposal. This is a request to zone property RS 10. As mentioned by staff, this is in a neighborhood evolving policy, and I think one of the intents in the policy is to provide a variety of housing, which this will do, and a range of density, which this will also do. And when the property's developed, it will provide walkability and open space, which are all part of your requirements or desires in Nashville Next. So it's not dissimilar from what you just looked at. This is a neighborhood evolving policy, and the density falls within that policy, the request falls within that policy, and therefore staff has made a recommendation of approval based upon the land use policy. I retain 2 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. 2 minutes for rebuttal, and anyone here wishing speak in support?
No one else is getting up there, all skittish.
Is this for support?
First and foremost, I want to appreciate you guys for your service, and more so for your staff, because you know your staff does most of your heavy lifting for you. I think most of them are going to chime in on pretty much the same thing. I just want to point two things out, and we alluded to that a development was approved just north of this development, that's going to bring in roughly 170 homes. This development's going to bring in both, basically the same. My bonnet contention with this is that we're changing up the neighborhood after everyone's moved in. I'm at 2524 Hesse Pass, that's just south of this, off of Hesse Road, and mine is an RS 15, all of my neighbors are RS 15, so why are we making the change? The change is simply because they have to develop more so with this land, water pumps, sewage pumps, everything else, so they need maximum return on their investment. Also, I'd like to bring to your attention that this same development, including the other one, was brought up a year and a half ago with Steve Glover. Okay, we had town hall meetings, we all went to them, and there was a large turnout of people of residents that came to that. Ultimately, it was squashed. The developers for both, this one and the other one that's approved, did it in run. They did theirs first, and now they're coming back for this one. So I just think it's kind of odd and how this is all playing out. I don't, I don't necessarily agree with them not being able to, to develop it, just keep it the same that we're used to, keep it the same that we've all bought into. And when you're talking about connectivity, for example, okay, you have one road in, one road out, all right, it's a two-lane, which we all, which we're all accustomed to. So, you know, I think I did just a quick dirty math, it's almost 400 cars that are going to be traversing that two-lane road that goes to stop signs, that goes through other communities that they're going to have to, that's going to be impacted as well. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. I have 2 minutes. State your name and your address, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you. My name is Justin Perkey, I live at 4645 Hesse Road. If you're looking at the property there, I'm the exact, the east side right there, you'll see my house there. I've got over 1,100 feet of my property that backs up to this, this property, so it, I do, it means a lot. Got six kids there that run around and play there, too, that we enjoy our neighborhood. Just a little bit about that, you've got, and it showed before, you've got seven points there, that's on the, the west side, it's zoned RS 15, not a cluster, but just RS 15 straight. The Lakeside Meadows, which is south of that, along Hesse Road, that is a RS 15 cluster. So there are some lots in there that are 7,500 square feet, but all the perimeter lots are RS 15. And so that's kind of my worry, is, is the perimeter of this, change it to RS 10, where you can do the cluster, you can do smaller lots inside, but my issue is going to be the perimeter of it. Is it going to match what's is there, which is 15,000 square foot lots, or is it going to go to the RS 10? So I, I just, I just think that you should go against the staff approval of this going from RS 15 to RS 10. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I'm Verlin Stewart, I live at 3542 Earhart, and I'm just south, just below where the, where the picture cuts off there, so I'm not in your picture. And my concerns, I'm going to follow along with what they both said, it's not consistent with everything around it right now. I don't understand why we need a recommendation to change it, unless it's just dollars, there's plenty of acres there to develop. Some of my biggest concerns are fire and emergency. Right now, our fire department is all the way at Lebanon Road in Old Hickory, and during certain times, you can't get there now, there's no shoulders on these roads, even an emergency vehicle with sirens blaring would have a hard time getting there. That's, that's one concern. The other one is the sinkholes. I live downstream, all of the water that comes from Lakeside Meadows drains around my house, I have water on three sides every time it rains. I knew that when I built it, I just moved in less than a year ago. Part of the reason the blue line stream behind my house is not overflowing is the sinkholes that are in the area. And I was told upfront that if you disturb those, you're going to change the entire water flow for the area. We're well aware, as you are from previous meetings, that this property is loaded with sinkholes, and while those are probably helping me right now, you mess with them and disturb that, and it may well send even more of the water that comes behind my house from seven points, it may add to that dramatically, even though, even though that may be inadvertent. So those are my two biggest concerns, along with the fact that just inconsistent. You know, everything else has always gone RS 15, unless it's just money driving this, that's what the area provides, we're near the lake, higher density is not what we really need, so I'd recommend a consideration to not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Seeing none, applicant will have 2 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, once again. As you'll notice, when you look at this red line, you'll see that there's nothing adjacent to this development, it's not abutting anything that's already developed. Had it been that, this may be in a neighborhood maintenance policy, but it's not a neighborhood maintenance policy. This is an evolving policy. This is an area where Nashville saw that there should be some growth, and there should be some variety of growth. So based upon the fact that it's not neighborhood maintenance, it is evolving, you wouldn't necessarily expect this to develop as subdivisions around its perimeter. And so, a lot, I talked to a lot of people in the community, they're all very good, I explained to them that when this does, if this does get rezoned, if the council member decides that he's going to take this through, that this would go through a lengthy process, we would have to submit a concept plan, there'll be a traffic study, water access, fire, all that has to be done in a very public process, and we'll certainly make sure, and you would make sure, that that would take place as well. So this is in an evolving policy, it does meet the intent, it does meet your land use policy, it provides some variety here, which is what you see in Nashville Next. You don't want to put all the density downtown, there needs to be some densities and some, and varieties spread throughout Davidson County, and this is a piece of property, and this area is one, which you saw would be an area that would evolve over time. And so, again, this is, this is consistent, staff is making a recommendation of approval, and I would hope you'd listen to the staff on this and recommend, recommend to the council that this be approved. Thank you.
Clear the public hearing close, and how about Commissioner Sims?
Can staff explain to me what the application of subdivision regulations may result? What does that really mean?
Are you referring to the maximum amount of units on page 115?
Yes.
Okay. So, when we do that calculation, we do it based on the minimum lot size required by that zoning district. So the RS 15 would require a minimum of 15,000 square feet per lot. The RS 10, a minimum 10,000 square feet. So what we do is take that acreage, calculate out what the percentage would be for, maybe infrastructure, roads, et cetera, and then we come up with a total maximum lot amount. But given the subdivision regulations and what's required within those subdivision regulations, it is unlikely they'd probably meet that maximum, we just give you the total maximum.
Okay, okay. So will this come back for some type of subdivision? Is that, is that how it will work?
Yep, as the applicant stated, there's a three-step process for this when you create new infrastructure. The first step would be the concept plan, that would be noticed and brought to the planning commission, and that's when we would take a look at all the requirements for the subdivision regulations, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. You're good, thank you. I absolutely agree that we've got to put density somewhere in downtown, so I think this is a good plan, and I'm for it.
Commissioner Gabel.
I agree with everybody. I, I understand that it is consistent with the policy, but I also understand why do we need to do it. I suspect there will be significantly fewer units when they get into that layout. So I, it's consistent with the policy, I'll support staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Moore.
I don't really have anything to add, but I will support staff's recommendation.
Councilman.
So when it's coming back to, to the planning department, the increase of 50% on density won't be changed, right? I mean, you guys are, I mean, once we agree that we're going to an RS 10, and we are getting more density, that's not something that you guys will be looking at. You guys will be looking at the regulations and that sort of thing.
Exactly. So the application before you is the zone change, we would make that recommendation to council, they would consider that request if it were approved. In the future, the applicant could return with a concept plan, and as you say, we would be evaluating that against the regulations. At this point, staff is just evaluating the zone change with the policy to see whether or not that is appropriate, based on the policy.
But we shouldn't give the people here the impression that, that the density will be discussed anymore. Once we're agreed to a higher density, that's, that's a done deal.
Right, that's why in our staff report, we give the maximum number of lots that would be allowed under the zoning, but when a subdivision is actually designed and the roads and the open space requirements come in, it may not result in the absolute maximum number of lots that's allowed. And we also look at the sinkholes and require the applicant to design around those sinkholes and put sinkholes into open space. So they may not achieve 192 lots, once the subdivision comes in, but that's what's allowed if, if they were to design it to the maximum potential, but it's unlikely that would happen if there's sinkholes and other things, other requirements that are, are part of the subdivision regulations.
That was the only clarification I wanted to.
Commissioner Bachea.
Just wondered, the SP just north of it, with, it's going to have 170 homes, was that, that was SP that wasn't rezoned, but the density will be pretty similar, right?
So before you, I will provide some clarification of that SP that's at the council right now. This is just north of the properties we're talking about. That was approved for 164 single-family residential units, ranging in lot sizes between roughly 3,000 square feet to almost 20,000 square feet.
So one of the things that we looked at, if you go back to the previous, is we tried to understand whether or not the proposal, if it were subdivided, would be consistent with the lot sizes in the adjacent properties, not only to the west and the south, but also in the new SP. So really, RS 15 and RS 10 could both be consistent with the, a neighborhood evolving policy. So then it came down to a question of context and whether or not this was appropriate. And so we found that the resulting sizes of the lots and things would be compatible or comparable to the surrounding, when you take into account the new SP that's, that was proposed, or that's been approved by the planning commission.
And those roads that are included on the SP, those will be taken into account when this applicant applies for his actual apartment.
It's a concept plan.
Mm-hmm, concept plan. Okay, I am going to support staff recommendation.
Mr. Bachea.
Do you have the, the policy map, just so we can see where this is relative to neighborhood maintenance?
So it's more yellow, probably, on the screen up here, but this whole area is the neighborhood evolving policy, where this lighter yellow is here, this is the neighborhood maintenance policy. So the majority of this area is all neighborhood evolving.
And that was because it was an existing subdivision at the time that the policy was put in place, so we weren't calling for change within that subdivision.
Okay, okay. And then the developments immediately around it, across Hesse Road and on the other side, those are all RS 15, but because of the subdivision, the cluster lots, they have, many of them have smaller lots, is that why it looks like that?
Yep, excuse me, yes. Some do have smaller lots, some do not, depending on if they were done under a cluster subdivision or not.
Okay, okay. I mean, I'm sort of with Commissioner Gabel, where I, I see both sides, it's kind of like, it's 15,000 or it's 10,000, it's, you know, why do we, why do we need to do this? But, you know, I think that, and I think there's a lot of development happening in this one little area, and I hope that somehow infrastructure is getting accounted for as, as all of these new units go into this area. But I, I don't think at the end of the day, the number of additional units by going from RS 15 to RS 10 is going to be the one thing that triggers major traffic issues. I mean, I think there's just going, infrastructure needs to be addressed in this area, given the number of units that are going in overall. So I am inclined to support staff recommendation.
We'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to support staff's recommendation.
And a motion to approve? Is there a second? There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I have a complaint.
Councilman?
Yeah, to the, to the residents, we have to, I mean, I feel that we have to match what the policy calls for, and the policy calls for higher density. But you, I will encourage you to talk to your council member, and come to the council and talk to the other council members, because the council has a more flexible outlook on things, we have the policy that we have to follow.
Very good point, very good statement. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes have it, and it's adopted. We are on to item 24. We are on to item 26. Bob, is that right? We finished our items for public hearing?
That's correct.
That's correct. So, item 26, historic zoning. Commissioner Tibbs is not here. I don't think there's... Next is the... Item 27 is the parks and rec... That's Commissioner Haynes. He's not in attendance. And the executive committee report. I would say that the search is moving forward. We are about ready to start the first committee process. There's two committees, as Ms. Hall stated when she came and spoke to us. So, that's moving forward. And I just want to give you an update on that. We had, I believe it was, over 60 applicants and some very good applicants. And so, once it gets to... If you have questions about the process,